Good afternoon. This is the Thursday, May 7, 2015, meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. Can we have, excuse me. Pardon me. Can we have quiet now? We're starting the meeting. This is the Thursday, May 7, 2015, meeting of the Athens City Planning Commission. A quorum has been established. Anyone who is interested in speaking before the planning commission, can you raise your hands? And do you solemnly swear to tell the truth as you know it to the Athens City Planning Commission? Okay. Thank you. Disposition of minutes. Paul, was there a question about the minutes?
I provided our updates, some clarifications on some last names and like a correct name for the historic commission as opposed to committee. And I think those were all incorporated in the final. So I would move to approve when somebody else had any issues.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous?
All abstention.
And one abstention. Cases. Number 15-07, City of Athens Bike Path Spur Lot Split. John?
Yes, Andy's not here yet, but that's okay. I think we can proceed without him. This is for a lot split at the Athens Health Realty, the Laurel's Health Center that they're splitting off for the 2.9 acres, 30 acres approximately, property at the very north end that will be an extension of the bike path that will be going to Columbus Road. So the only thing that we noticed on this is that, and I could talk to Andy about it and Jessica, that we probably want to make sure it's tied continuous and contiguous with the property on the other side of the river because it is a landlocked parcel. So we want to tie it together. Shouldn't be a problem since the bike path is part of this and on the other side of the river as well.
Any questions?
So a bike path does not constitute an opening or a driveway of any sort? By definition, I guess. Just ask me.
I don't know. I was just doing the lot split on it. As far as the opening permit, we'd have to look at that and then of course you got the lot split to go from there.
We've never looked at it as such in the past, or for any bike path throughout the city, throughout the county that I can think of. It's never been treated as such at the regional or at the city level.
And you said there's no one here at this time to speak?
Well, it's the city property. I'm doing the best I can, but you know, if the city is, like I said, acquiring the property from the Laurel's or from Athens Health Realty for this bike path extension.
This will be the one side of where the bridge goes in? Is that it?
That is correct. It's the one that Andy Stone is, I believe he says he's going to try to get out the bid this Sunday or next Sunday.
Yeah, rebid it. Came in too high first time.
Again, like I said, it doesn't meet the, it's landlocked and it doesn't meet with the depth ratio, but if it's held continuous and contiguous with the property on the other side, then that's not an issue. So that, we would just ask that that get put into terminology on the deed, that that's included in there, and that should be easy enough to do.
Okay. I'd move to approve the lot split with the conditions.
I mean, it is a public good. It's a permit of the municipality, and this piece is needed.
Motion has been seconded. Vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Case number 15-08, Shawn Jones, Columbus Road Lot Split. Mr. Paskey?
I'm looking here. I believe that should be 06, Char, just up for your records. Yes, that's what I have here. Oh, I'm sorry. You know what? Your case, our numbers are almost identical to our application. Never mind, you're okay. That's what threw me for a loop here.
So it's 08? 08, okay.
Yeah, this is the property that's located on Columbus Road that is currently owned by Shawn Jones, and he is wishing to, if you look through the packet, I tried to help out on this, that probably about the fourth page, the one that I did in the black and the yellow, you can see where the black lines or the dotted lines of the two parcels that currently exist, and the yellow lines are the two lots that are being proposed. So you have a 3.021 acre lot on Columbus Road, and then the rest of the property of the two combined will be residual. That will be a larger 20.562 acre parcel that'll have only 50 foot of frontage. This will need to go through the city council to receive a variance for, with the depth ratio for the residual parcel. And the new parcel though is a legitimate 3.8, if that's a 3.021 acre parcel on Columbus Road.
So there'd be a little bit of a strip?
Basically, it's an access strip.
On lot number five that would connect to Columbus Road?
Yes. Basically, it's an access strip to get to the rear of it. If you notice, the majority of the residual property is in the flood, in the floodway, I believe. So it's not even developable. You have a little bit there towards the front behind what would be lot number six and lot number seven. In any instance, nothing can be done on either one of these parcels until either FEMA maps are changed or until the CLOMAR that was established on this property is closed. So, yes, Nancy?
Mr. Paskey, can you tell me where the drainage area is with respect to these two properties, the thing with those under the road and then?
I have been told that that is not to be a concern for this discussion. I met with the law director's office and they said, don't worry about that.
I mean, are we, is it, are either of these two parcels on top of that?
Yes.
Wouldn't it be incumbent upon us to have an easement for that?
That's in the middle of a?
Litigation.
Litigation right now.
So, I mean, but?
I asked the law director's office and they said to proceed without worrying about that.
That was their advice, right?
Right. I don't know where that is at, that litigation.
Well, it seems pretty important for us to have that protected. I mean, law director's advice notwithstanding. I mean, since we already had one major case on this and the whole side of the street votes.
No, we, this is indeed, needs to be separated from, I feel, I would echo the law director's advice on that.
Well, don't you think it should go in the deed just as a citizen saying, you know, this is serious business? The drainage on the other side of the street and their property values all depend on this.
I don't know if we can ask of that why it's still pending litigation and we're at what the outcome of that resolve is.
Well, we're giving them an advantage by letting them split it, but?
Well, technically it already is split.
So the citizen's getting the short end of the stick, pardon me.
Technically, it already is split.
Pardon me?
Currently, you can see the black line going down the center. There are currently two parcels.
Well, that's authority splitting. Why are we here?
Because it is making a new lot.
They're splitting the frontage lot. I see.
Yeah. I suppose I'm the only one there. I mean, if the road were over it, the pathway into this so-called subdivision, then I would not be fussing, but I'm fussing right now, sorry. I mean?
I hear you.
I know it's not your fault, but you're going to get offended.
So the dotted vertical line that goes through lot 4-A and then proceeds down into the bottom part, that's the current split?
That's the current split between the two parcels, yeah.
Okay. And then basically what you're, what they're asking is to incorporate the two pieces that are on either side of the vertical dotted line?
You've got the yellow, you've got a new 3 acre lot and then the residual. So you're creating the 3 acre lot.
Okay.
Okay, that's the designated lot 4A, is that what I'm looking at?
Yeah, correct.
That's going to be combined with the other frontage?
Correct.
Okay. And is the back parcel getting combined as well?
The entire residual is being combined, yes.
And that's lot 5A now?
That is correct.
And that's the 28.562 acres total?
Correct.
And most of that is in the floodway or floodplain?
Floodway, I believe.
Floodway.
And is that, is this part of the part that was going to be a part of the sunset CLOMAR once FEMA maps were accepted?
It should be, it should be with those maps. Yeah, that's correct.
And the city limit line is where on those maps?
The river? The city boundary?
Yeah.
It's this right here. That's the Hawking River. And that separates city from county.
I just wanted to be sure of that. Okay, great.
Across the river there is a city-owned piece of real estate that's outside the city limits. Actually, we never incorporated it.
The armory is well filled?
Exactly.
Very important one, right?
Yeah, 70% of order.
Yeah, very important. Okay, so Paul, would they be able to fill additional areas? I mean, this is an area where they scooped up the stuff on the edge?
They would not be able to fill additionally at this time based on?
With the old CLOMAR?
Because of the, the CLOMAR was expired.
Okay.
The CLOMAR expired with the 2009 maps that FEMA issued to us. And so to do any additional fill work in that location, they would, at this time, based on our current 2009 map, FEMA flood firm map, they would have to go through that letter of map removal process with FEMA again to do any fill work in a floodway. As mapped, the location is in a floodway. With the updated maps that FEMA issued in 2013 through a preliminary process but have never been formally adopted by FEMA yet because of disputes going on in the city of Nelsonville with the floodway boundary, assuming that those maps do become law, the buildable location that's shown more or less for that new lot 4A will be removed from the floodway, if that makes sense.
The buildable being the out on the hill?
The buildable lot that's being created, that square, that 3.021 acres, that for the most part would be removed from the floodway, but once those new maps are adopted.
So looking at this map, can I, looking at this map, it shows, actually it says floodway boundary estimated, and that estimate is what will occur once the FEMA maps are?
I have asked for that floodway boundary estimated to be removed from the plat before it recorded, and that's in my comments. And the larger, the 2x3 plat that John has, the original that was provided to us, I have it commented, it just did not appear very well on yours because it?
I don't see that.
I'm not comfortable with that being recorded as such because those floodway boundaries can change over time as FEMA issues new maps. And so I don't want, that should not be safe for prosperity because it may change.
Right. And Mr. Linder is here, and he brought me over another survey, and it may have that documentation on there along with the surveyors. I didn't bring it because you also brought me the original MYLAR. I don't think we need that, so.
Okay, I guess what I'm, the question I'm asking is, we stated that there's, you know, the FEMA maps are going to adjust the floodway fringe. Does this dotted line represent the adjustment once the FEMA maps are accepted or as it is now?
I think it's close.
It's close.
That would be as accepted, assuming that the new maps are adopted.
Going forward?
Right.
Okay. I guess because I'm trying to picture what the residual 20 acres is going to look like in terms of possible development, and I think that echoes when we talk about filling in the floodway?
Right.
And what that impact would be. Okay.
There are two pages to this survey. Now, the first one was a signature sheet, and it does have that nomenclature that that line is not to be, it's based on the new maps being adopted, and it's only an assumption. So it is on the first page.
I guess the question is, if it ever got developed, what kind of, you know, what would look there? With such a small frontage, it really wouldn't be useful commercial, and that's B3 if my members correct?
Yeah.
And trying to siphon everything through there in terms of utilities might be difficult too. So we're back to almost like still more easement, which is a pending case.
So that you're aware that the person that owns the property, Shawn Jones owns it, he's actually keeping the 3.021 acre lot. The, there's another party that's purchasing what would be the larger 20 acres that's pretty much non-developable, and I'd have to let Mr. Linder speak more to that if he wants to do so.
Mr. Linder, would you like to come up to the podium? Just identify yourself and your company?
I'm Mr. Linder, Larry Tomrath Realty. I'm representing both parties, buyer and seller in this transaction and the lot split. There is no intent here other than really separate unusable property from usable property because the buyer had the desire to have this land. There is no intent or purpose other than to acquire some land that he'd like to be able to grow up at this point in time in trees and shrubs.
So we're talking about the 20 acres?
And really, there's no, the frontage isn't going to allow for any development on the frontage of Columbus Road, and I think Mr. Paskey probably confirmed that, could face a 50-foot strip.
Well, if there was a variance for the lot, it would.
I'm sorry?
If there was a variance for the lot, for the width-to-depth ratio, then yeah, it could be developed, you know, provided that it meets all the other guidelines.
So not to ask questions in terms of your buyer, what the intent is when you say growing shrubs and?
What they just let it to continue on its natural habitat.
Okay. Well, yeah, okay.
There's no plans that are in the immediate future or even long-term future. I can't guarantee, you know, property can be sold to somebody else and they could have a different intent, but?
Well, I'm cognizant of the fact that we've got floodway there, we probably have wellhead protection area as well.
We do, absolutely.
You know, trying to put services down that little pipeline of a frontage might be difficult.
Right.
And again, when you say it's growing shrubs, then, you know, I was thinking, you know, some kind of highly intensive landscaping that would impact a wellhead protection area.
No.
Okay.
Now, would Shawn Jones own that little strip that's next to the lot that we want to have separated, that you want to have separated?
Okay, I have to refer to it.
No, that would go with the, that's all one feet. That little strip coming down is basically the access to the larger parcel.
Right, that's the access to the 20 acre piece, the 50-foot frontage.
Okay. I guess make a good canoe livery, but not really.
So you're saying this line?
Disappearing.
This line, the one that you drew in in black?
Mm-hmm. The one that I, the one that I dotted in in black is a separation between the two existing parcels. If you look at, I attached within there the county auditor's plat cards of the two existing parcels, and they join each other. So as you can see, it's just two large parcels that has approximately right now equal frontage on Columbus Road. And part of that frontage is going with this new 3 acre lot, and then the 50-foot residual piece is going to be left over as an access to get to all the land to the rear of it.
So I heard you saying that this is creating a buildable lot?
Well, I, I think I was saying that the residual, the 50-foot frontage, really is not very suitable for commercial development, only because of its size. It's very small, but?
I had?
This piece right in through here, if you look for the flood, it's very difficult to see out to here. This is a 50-foot right-of-way going, or access that will be going to the back, and then right here, something could technically probably be done. This is?
This is elevated.
Both of these currently, crossed here and crossed here, are, would be, something could be built here and here, provided the CLOMAR gets done. We won't do it until that's done, or until the new FEMA or maps are adopted, one of the two. But right now, you got a lot here, or I mean, the proposed lot here, and then this will be a little 50-foot strip that will get to the rear of all of this.
What's the width on?
50 foot.
50 foot on that, so, okay.
What's the width of the right-of-way? 40?
Of Columbus Road?
No. No, you said there, this is an old subdivision theoretically, and so how wide is the right-of-way going to be?
There is no right-of-way one to the right.
I thought you just said?
No, no.
And what do you want tied continuously and continuously?
That's on the bike path.
That's the bike path line. That's previous line.
It's complicated, and we just don't have anything to seize on except that.
Then have the photo back in.
Yeah, this, this piece is this piece.
And then the other parcel?
And the other one is this piece.
And those two will be combined, they'll shave off?
So basically, you're, right there, you're combining both parcels?
The back?
The whole thing, these two that are on the county, and then breaking off the 3 acre lot.
And you said it was unusable, the back?
This here, anything's usable if you want to spend money.
Well, within the code interpreted correctly?
Yeah, because, well, if it's in the floodway, it couldn't be?
Not the floodway.
Well, if this is going to be in the floodway?
But, but assuming the line is going to be approximate about where this dotted line is through here, this area right here, this flag-shaped block?
Essentially, this parcel will be here, it's elevated.
But again, this would be required before they could build on that, correct?
The variance is being, would have to, that's, we're starting that proceeding right now, I assume. This would go to city council for a variance for that one not to have lot to depth or ratio. And that is granted.
So once that's approved, that could be buildable.
That would make it a buildable lot.
It's a 50-foot lot.
If they close the CLOMAR or when the FEMA maps are adopted.
And that'll happen probably anyway.
Sooner or later it will, yes.
But it's been like this?
But this is what I want to point out.
10 years?
We already have two buildable lots there. You got this one here and this one here. I mean, because this line, so you still have two lots right here already, so they're not increasing the buildable lots.
And in fact, the residual lot makes it more restrictive to develop on.
Yeah.
I'm not a, I've been trying to stay out of that. Comes across and runs this way.
It doesn't matter.
Comes across and runs this way.
Goes, empties right about here.
I don't know.
Have you ever been in the back there? Then don't have a view.
We're not talking there.
Well, I can't tell.
So lot 4A is being created?
Excuse me, the law director had indicated and certainly sent information to us as well that that was not a relevant discussion.
From the law director's point of view, with respect to litigation, with respect to us making a decision, it certainly is relevant to me.
What's this?
I'm asking, is lot 4A what's being created?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
But with no knowledge of use and only green?
The green is all this.
Not this?
Not that.
Oh.
Well, you know, as long as it's floodway, it's green. I mean, basically, it's a B3, so you could actually build a residential there and just have stilts because you wouldn't have any business in the bottom or something?
I was just asking again from the wellhead protection?
Yes, I know.
Plan about what the proposed use would be on this?
There is no proposed use.
No proposed use.
And again, that has to just go off, if you think about a green leaf being on the periphery of a river.
In essence, it's just a lot, in my mind, a lot replat or replats. It's the same owner, and he's just changing the boundaries of the property, albeit he's selling one of those properties, or intend to sell.
What I find interesting is selling the large part that's, from my point of view, less attractive.
Right, absolutely.
Mr. Linder, I mean, as you see it, is it more likely to be developed as residential use?
No. Absolutely not.
I mean, and beyond your immediate timeframe, so defined?
I don't, I don't see, I mean, I guess, I would defer to them of whether it can be buildable or not, but I can't imagine that building in the floodway is a viable?
No, 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 not in the floodway, in that, in the lot that's on Columbus Road.
It's more suitable for commercial, in my professional opinion.
But it's been sitting there for a good long time now, developed.
Yeah. Well, the market hasn't allowed for somebody to buy a, buy the lot down there and to build on it. I, you know, we're not in expansive.
Wasn't that Columbus causing on the top for a while?
Well, again, you know, I can't comment on what the future is going to hold, but the reality of it is Columbus Road is primarily a commercial district down there. That's been the intent, that's how it's owned. I would think that's the most suitable future use for the parent parcel that's left. The residual, I don't, I don't see any, how somebody's going to develop that, but maybe someday that could happen. I don't, unless I, unless there are any questions of me, I don't.
No, I think, thank you, Mr. Linder.
Andy?
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Does anybody want to put forth a motion?
Grant the lot split split with, and I'm not going to vote for it, with the condition that, to CLOMAR. I don't know what condition we're supposed to have, but the one that Paskey talked about.
Well, there's a?
Variance gets approved.
There is a variance issue here.
Who's going to approve the variance?
O DNR?
We would recommend to city council, and the city council would then take this on. And of course, all applicable codes and what have you, because we have to be sensitive that it's in the wellhead protection area and without knowing a use and flood and so on.
So is it that, did you want the estimated floodway boundary removed before the new deed was recorded?
Yes.
Okay.
But again, this will have to go through the process with city council before it's completed.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanted, I was requesting that that be taken off the plat.
Okay. So did you add the new one to it?
I would not, because again, they can change. Boundaries, flood maps can change over time, and if this thing's recorded in a month and we get new maps five years from now and it shows a shift, if this piece of real estate is conveyed to a new property owner, it could confuse that person, and they may think that they have more real estate to develop, or, or may not, or they may think they have less depending on what could happen in the future. So it's best for those, that information to be separated from a survey or a plat, in my opinion, a plat specifically.
I would like, I would like to add, and I don't think I have the votes to do it, and I would vote for it then if an easement were granted or in the deed for the pipe that is under that law theoretically, although Mr. Paskey, you know, says it may not be. But just because, I think it's very bad practice to have a major drainage line without some notation in the, in the deed. But maybe they can vote on that because I, that certainly is something that does interfere with the value of the property, and it will interfere with the rights of the property that was across the street. I didn't plan it that way if I, you know, there used to be a perfectly good grassy verge that was there that drained before this all started. Low tech. I'm just going to ask them if they want to strike that.
So is that a motion?
That's, that's part of my motion to adopt.
Okay. Where, could you repeat that? What did you write down? I got lost.
Nancy Bane recommends to city council a variance for the depth ratio and the estimated floodway boundary moved before?
Recorded plat, and then an added easement granted in the deed for under, for the drainage line under the lot is the three things.
Okay, you can make a statement.
No, I'll second that, okay? And again, I have some apprehension about the back portion being sold, having it that once it's in the city, a B3 gives you lots of play to do things, you know, and the fact that it's found attractive to purchase, I guess it'd be nice if somebody says, yes, I want to develop wherever riparian buffer for the city and so, but I'm a little bit worried about the next step. We can't predict that, but we can certainly, you know?
And Char, could you put in there that this would be on, you know, I guess I would like to, although Paul's seconding it, and I'll see if he'll accept this, as things develop? You know, in other words, that it would not be, have to be until everything is settled.
You mean no development until the court?
No, no, I mean, no, no change in the deed until, that means long reach, huh?
Well, I was saying until it's all passed through the process?
No, until, on the litigation, we're not supposed to talk about that until it's settled.
I don't know if we can pin it on that.
I don't know, that was my, you know, that was?
Your friendly amendment? I think I'll have to refuse that unless somebody else wants to do a second.
All right, all right. I've got it. If you don't like it, vote it down and start it.
Okay.
Char, could you go ahead and read back what we're doing now?
I thought these were going to be.
Now, this is with her.
Not with the new one, he refused it.
Okay, so this.
You'll nail that there's an easement for the pipe, which is big.
Okay, so Nancy Bane recommend approval to city council with the variances for the width-to-death ratio, and that the plat is recorded with the estimated floodway boundary removed, and then to add the easement granted, I assume, to the city of Athens in the deed for the drainage line under the lot.
Sounds like what I seconded, and I'll be seconded again.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Two? Okay, three to two?
Sorry, so who was?
It was three votes.
Three votes for, two against.
Paula. These were the easy ones.
I think.
Case number 15-09, BP Station Court and State Street, Title 41. Mr. Pasky?
They're with me here. Okay, you may remember the communication three weeks ago on this. I did bring back drawings, I know I asked if we'd bring them, but there are copies in there as well, just in case. A quick synopsis on the property, it's the Goldsberry Apartments in Northport will be located at 50 Northport Street at the current location of the BP gas station. The property is owned by Kevin and Christie Goldsberry. The site is located on a northeast corner of East State Street and Northport Street in downtown Athens. The surrounding zoning is B3 on the north side of East State Street and B2D on the south side of East State Street. The proposed use will be a three-and-a-half-story mixed-use building consisting of both commercial and residential. The existing carryout use will continue operation on the first floor as well as a rental office for the apartments. Parking will be on-site within the basement and on the first floor and outside. Access to the basement level will be off Northport Street while the rest of the parking is accessed from East State Street. The two-and-a-half stories of residential above will consist of two four-bedroom units, seven three-bedroom units, and three two-bedroom units for a total of 12 units and 35 beds. Staff report, staff reviews, the site is owned B3, as I said, a general business zone. The, it does meet all the requirements for lot width, maximum height, front yard setback, side yard setback, rear yard setback. Coverage is not applicable, flood hazard is not applicable. There are 46, or 48 parking spaces provided, where 46 are required. The bicycle is required 39 spaces, 35 are provided underneath in the parking area, and I've requested that four more be put in front of the building by the carryout. A dumpster has been provided, and I have asked that this be part of the centralized trash recycling plant uptown, that they would become part of the Northport that we've been working on establishing, and they will be needed, required to go to Shade Tree Commission probably next week, May 14th. Estimated 11 trees required, and they have 11 trees provided. From the fire chief, he's requesting, basically, our basic notes as far as enunciator panel, panel, lock box. His biggest issue was dry stand pipes in each stairwell. I have shared that with the information with the architects, and they're willing to do so, and that'll be part of the fire suppression drawings when they submit to the state of Ohio, vision of patrimon buildings. He had a few other comments in regards to door swings and such, but those will all be, they're just, they were just mishaps on the drawings that'll be taken care of, especially when it goes through the state level. Captain Harvey did have his concerns about the balconies that are on it, but the balconies are on the property, they are not stepping over, the property lines are going over the sidewalk, so there will be no revocable license needed or anything like that. He was content that the site had adequate lighting, and he did have a question to Andy Stone about the concept of a light being removed from there and becoming a stop sign or two-way traffic, I should say. And Andy has commented that he doesn't ever see that happening and not really to worry about it, so.
You mean two-way traffic on court?
He said, Andy, can you advise that the site triangle for the front of the proposed BP would be adequate if Court Street was ever made two-way traffic? So my, and Andy says it would be so long as the intersection remains signalized. If they changed to a stop sign on State and Court was two-way, uncontrolled, it could be an issue, but he doesn't ever see that happening.
Okay.
Paul had no issues with the problem, or with the project, and Engineering Public Works had a few small comments in regards to some parking meter sleeves, tying the drains into the storm system and making sure that the sump pump is tied into the sanitary, sump pump for the basement parking. Other than that, we will require a buster report, a closure on this, obviously with the gas tanks that are there when they are removed, but that obviously is very preliminary at this time, so. The architects are here to speak on behalf of the project, and outside of that, it met all staff requirements.
Questions from commission? Nancy?
Referring to alley sewer, is it adequate to handle?
Sorry?
Referring alley sewer, we had a few go-rounds about that in the last 10 years, 12 years? So far.
Any, any comments in regards to utilities Andy's made? The only sewer issue he had was, actually, didn't have any, oh, sanitary, that's the sump pump, he pumped in the sanitary sewer line, and that's all.
And the sump pump would be storm water?
Coming out of the basement level parking garage, yes.
Because we had massive problems along that street as they intensified the line and, you know, Stoffer, Jack Stoffer's the one that comes to mind. I just wonder if there was a discussion of that.
I thought we did an upgrade of that.
I thought it was.
It was after the upgrade, remember?
Well, yeah, there were some problems in terms of tying things in.
I don't know, I think it was connections rather than the other. But what about storm sewer?
Storm, instead of just show roof drains, a connection into the storm system.
I know it won't be increased, but it does.
Yeah, it's already 100% impermeable, so it's not going to increase.
Where does it go, just down the street? Because the storm sewers are really lacking in that part, too.
Again, Engineering Public Works did their assessment on it and said it was okay.
I think that storm sewer is actually, on that end of North Court is slightly better than what we have on the South Court.
Well, that's good.
I mean, if you look, not really. I mean, if you look at the water running, storm water running off of, by the Chase Bank, it has to go all the way around the block to, to in front of Canton Hall unless it gets the drain.
I just want to know, I'm interested in how, I know the title line was proposed to be, it seems, I'd have to see more evaluation.
I, yeah, okay.
But that's, I don't.
I do see, he talks about more, provide details, connection details for the sanitary sewer, so I know he's concerned.
Connection, that's.
Title 41 requires all the drawings for utilities to be completed and engineered at the time of dismissal, and they are reviewed by Engineering and Public Works, so, and then they are complete documented drawings at this point, and Andy's office has said.
Remember, that was, it was a serious question with respect to the, up the block a bit, you know, will the sewer hold? I mean, it's not like it's a new question.
Right.
They're going to relocate our part, city parking meters?
There are some, no, I think what they were wanting to know there is, there's curve cuts that'll be coming out, new parking meters going in, so when the sidewalks are poor, they probably want sleeves put in for the meters to be put in.
You'll have to come up to the, are the architects here to come up to the podium for any comments or questions? And could you please identify yourself, and who you work for, your company?
They've got everything.
Yeah.
We have multiple copies.
Good afternoon, my name is John Ballenko with RBC Architects, and the one thing that I think John has already alluded to there, that our engineer is Ryan Buckley, and this is the one thing that has developed since the site plan review has gone into effect, that the site utilities all get engineered, as indicated prior to approval. So they've worked with Andy Stone and the departments Water and Sewer and Storm to make sure that they conform and what we have planned will fit with the city systems.
On the site.
And if they don't, then we have to upgrade them, which is what we've had in the past.
I don't see any accessible parking shown on the plans. Do you have?
We've got, we'll have accessible parking, well, I thought that some of it is on the streets, but we will have some on-site. As John indicated, we have two additional parking spots and room to do it. And we will provide probably one inside and one outside.
Yeah, it's inside. First parking is the lower level and inside on the first floor.
Something too that I think is sort of, it might not be evident right now to you, but part of the first floor obviously is dedicated towards parking right now, because of the regulation in the B3 zone that parking be provided for commercial activities. Now, what we've done, we've designed it so that that parking on the first floor matches identically the requirement in the convenience store. So if, in fact, in the future, that regulation is reduced or eliminated, we can turn those parking areas that are on Court Street into usable commercial space. That was our long-term plan, possibility maybe for that to happen.
You mean the ones you're creating?
Inside the building on the first floor.
So this won't be a basis for additional, if this were granted, you don't see this becoming a wedge for future variance requests? Because it's commercial parking, you say?
Well, I think that the reason we had to do it was because of tearing down the building and starting over again.
No, no, I mean, but parking on the first floor, we turned Russell Chamberlain down on for, for parking on the first floor, or at least he came and talked and left and did something else. And that was the first time, you know, the whole long history of parking on the first floor?
Well, parking's legal.
Of course.
I know, I mean, well, I mean, we just had to make it work on this job.
Are you going to, will there be a potential that tenants would be parking on the first floor?
Oh, no, they don't need to.
Okay.
Those parking spaces are all dedicated, that's why it could be for.
Do you mean dedicated, actually, John? You mean that they are going to go with the rental of the apartments? You're not going to use the usual Athenian? The rent is $600, but if you don't take the parking place, it's 525?
I'm not sure if the owners intend to.
Well, I mean, that's, that's why this whole conversation is kind of, you know, I know what you're saying, but.
Well, I think that they prefer to have commercial activities on the entire first floor of the building, and I'm just saying that in the event that that is permitted in the future, we will have all the parking that's required for residential use on-site.
The point is almost moot, though, because it's all changed up.
Are you saying you don't have all your parking required on-site now?
Oh, yeah.
I thought you did, okay.
Two extra spaces.
Commercial is inside the building, on the first floor.
And John, I do agree with Christie, you need to take them two extra spaces and make them handicapped accessible.
Okay.
And maybe more, we'll have to look into that number, what's required.
Well, the state of Ohio has regulations.
Right.
Where's the garbage can?
So, you're telling me that the commercial parking's inside and the residential's outside?
No, basement is also residential as well.
Oh, okay.
I'm not sure exactly how it will end up being distributed, but I'm just saying that, point being that.
For our purposes, that's what you're saying.
In the future, hopefully, if we get parking restrictions lowered in that zone to a BTD level, there will not be a problem with the residential not having adequate parking in this piece of property.
There's not a problem now with a residential having adequate parking?
No.
Okay.
So then what would you do? Rent it up? I mean, is it possible you'll be renting this to store owners or other people on the street?
Well, right now, the commercial has those spots, so whatever employees, I got a, I mean, this is a quick traffic convenience store, not likely.
It's a low-level good, right?
Yeah.
If you were talking about in terms of downtown.
There will be, there'll be parking spots for people that want to drive up to the convenience store and park and go in.
So, let's see. You have 13 spaces in the ba, no, I was saying you have 22 spaces, 24 spaces in the basement. And entrances are ramped down off Court Street.
The commercial spaces are required to be, or 11 commercial spaces and 35 residential spaces.
Okay, so the commercial spaces basically looks like they're to the east of the building. Is that what I'm looking at?
I'd say, again, they can be anywhere, but we can make sure that they put a signs that are for state on M11 to the east of the building that say for commercial parking only.
Are there 13 spaces on top outside?
It says 11.
That's on gray.
You're talking about the ones that, what we would call Magic Video Passion Works on here?
Adjacent to that.
Those are all minted out.
Because we call everything by its previous name.
They're minted.
As far as the, could you remind me on when vehicles might be unloading, as far as for the commercial store, they've got the adequate space to park off, off-street?
There might be a small concept that they could park off-street, in that rear parking area, apparently.
Loading zones, touchy subject.
Yeah. It's a convenience store.
If they sell beer, they'll be.
I believe there's already a loading zone in the general vicinity, and they will be eliminating two curve cuts going into the site, that one of them could be created into a loading zone or, and additional street parking.
The loading zone is on.
Farther up.
It's across the, it's across the street.
East State, going to Mill.
Which kind of also has that little, John, you say they're creating additional on-street parking?
No.
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 The city could.
It could.
They're eliminating curve cuts, and so that would, that would create an opportunity if the city wanted to put additional meters in.
Yeah, would not be for their site or for their use, it just would be for the city, public park, lovely park.
If they're adding two additional accessible parking spaces, does that subtract from the regular or?
No, they have, the accessible has to come out as a required amount, it doesn't mean you have to add more. It just means that whatever the state requires as a number of accessible spaces, they will have to provide. So if they have 48 parking spaces, and if the code comes back says four of them have to be acceptable, accessible, then they'll have to do so, so.
It's not unusual, but some of the handicap parking spaces require more space, room in general. I think a wheelchair accessible as well as just trying to get in and out of a car.
That's why I'm thinking that those two spaces on page, if you look at page A1.1, there's two spaces at the very bottom of the page, next to the bicycle area that I'm sure can be reconfigured to accommodate the party, and it's right next to the elevator.
Okay.
I'm going back to the parking, you know, what's, what is legal, I think is a term you used or what have you, in terms of parking being viewed as a commercial endeavor?
Mm-hmm.
Can you remind me, John, of why we landed there when, it seemed to me when we were first brought forward, and this is a previous case, the argument was made that it did not meet commercial?
The, the original application that went to the Board of Zoning Appeals had enough residential parking off-site and on-site, but did not meet the amount of commercial parking spaces. The building was twice the size then, so, but they've decreased the, but number of beds and the square footage of the commercial space considerably since that request. Does that answer?
Not sure.
There are so many commercial space on the first floor and the definition of that, again, the definition of that, I mean, how, how you can tie it up?
The way we've been doing it is if, and this is all in light of the Bellavino situation, is parking on the first floor only is considered an accessory use to the residential on the first floor. It is not commercial space, therefore it cannot be considered commercial, therefore it was not permissible. If there was commercial space provided on the first floor, then the red, the parking could be, as long as there's some, we haven't established this to a square footage amount, we've talked about that, but we haven't. So they're providing commercial on the first floor, and they have parking on part of the first floor as well, just like Bellavino did, just like they're doing at the Lambors building right now. The same concept. And the idea was we wanted street-front commercial, and, and what's, I guess their argument is what say that the 11 spaces or whatever for the commercial space aren't the 11 spaces on the first floor, which therefore they would be commercial parking spaces. So John's argument, what he's saying is, is differentiating between what's residential and commercial is whatever.
It's tough, right?
So, you know, but the bottom line is, they're required to have 48, 46 parking spaces, and they do, and I'm sure we have to. spaces, and they do, and I'm sure if we have to, and we want to determine, we can say 11 of these are for commercial parking spaces, and we put a sign on them, or make a requirement for, for business use only. And that way, we can hopefully determine that they're not leased out or nearby. I can reassure you that no one's going to come to us down the road with another application for another building and say, "I'm going to lease 11 parking spaces off of the BP station," because we wouldn't allow it, because we know this parking is required for their use. Whether they turn around and lease those parking spaces out that's required for commercial, we do the best we can, but I can't say that won't happen or we'll ever catch it.
Can't enforce it.
But that happens on every business.
But I think, I think using the Lambourne's building isn't exactly the same, because it was way in the back, and there was some-
This, Eric, can you hear me?
No, my voice is scratchy, too. There's, I just, I'm not sure about Lambourne's, but Bellavino for sure, which I wasn't even here for, so, and I would have voted against. But the problem with this particular one is that two-thirds probably of the ground floor is taken up and parked.
We never really said a, you know, number or ratio in terms of business.
Yeah, I know.
In terms of businesses. Yeah, I understand what you're saying, I'm looking at the artist rendition there, I don't know what the parking space is going to look like, because A2.1 shows, you know, is that going to be a wall, that's going to be open or closed, I assume it's going to be a wall, but I'm not sure how the image of that on Court Street looks when we're going to have a, it's a little parking at that point.
That's open?
That's open.
That's open?
Yes.
So people can see the cars?
Yeah, and we were actually, yeah, except it'll be at higher elevation, and we've already approached, and we've talked with the owners about working with Passion Works to come up with a fence guardrail detailed kind of design that might make it more appealing store, or street front there.
Okay.
I guess we can't really say we're losing a storefront, it's pretty big, you know, separate from that, so, but I hear what Nancy's saying, and the intent was to try to maintain commercial on first floors.
And higher level commercial.
Yeah.
But I, John keeps looking forward to this hypothetical time when things changes, but I don't know that it's going to. You'll have it all redeveloped by then.
It can happen.
Anything can happen.
But, you know, it's transitional.
The first floor is going to be precast concrete, planks, and the second floor as well, so the residential will be separated from the parking and the commercial by at least a two hour fire separation of concrete.
I'd love to give you a variance if you had a higher level commercial use going in that parking area.
You can't do that.
That was tried.
I doubt that's making a deal, but, I mean, I do think that the downtown is suffering.
What's the calculation that you've reached 11 on this commercial parking?
I'm sorry?
What do you use, what do you use as the calculation to reach 11?
On the, the business office is 300 square foot, it's one for 300 for that, so one space for that, to carry out 2,006 square feet at one for 200, so they're required to have 10 spaces for that, and so that's where I come up with the 11, and then the, obviously, one-to-one on the beds.
So, how wide are the balconies that we're talking about?
Five feet.
What is it?
Five feet wide.
Five feet.
And they'll be on concrete.
Okay, and they are actually within, off the right way, obviously.
So difficult to place any controls on that balcony?
Unless it's part of a larger deal.
Well, I'm looking at the artist rendition of, this is April Fool's, oh, 40115 here, and almost looks like the, the building bumps in at the intersection there.
Yes.
So the curbs actually, the, so what am I looking at there? We've, we're, we've got a wide street there or something, or?
What's that now?
I think he's trying to visualize the balconies.
I'm trying, actually, I'm trying to visualize why that gets wider than, than, it kind of tucks out into Court Street.
The, 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 the commercial, we're on the property line with the outside of that building, and that bulk of the building, the two and a half stories sets back off of the street, the street line.
So the balconies are actually level with the commercial space below?
Yeah, no, yeah, well, they're in, no, they're inset five feet from the parking and the commercial.
I see, okay, yeah, okay, now I see, and, 2A1, okay, I see, yeah.
We're looking at the ancestral drawing.
Yeah, I started with that, because it looks like it actually tucks in.
I don't know, this looks like it's just a-
Yeah, when they drop it, it'll take commercial, drop the boxes.
Okay, that, I think I have an idea what's going on there. And the attic plan actually is where the bedroom and bathroom is, right? Yeah, what I'm looking at is this way, it's like, okay, so is this, is this the present street line right here, and then this tucks, falls away from it?
Sidewalk and street, everything is going to be right on the property line.
Everything being built.
All the sidewalks have to be rebuilt down here, but, because there's no building on the property line at this time, so.
I think what the curve is kind of like an optical-
Oh, it's just-
It's an optical illusion, so to speak, okay.
Johnson, is that patio, is that all within your property lines as well?
Well, that's what I'm looking at, I mean, basically, this intersection right here, you just have to leave the space to here, is this the actual corner where some crosswalk exists, or is this over here where the crosswalks?
Well, they have to have handicap tents, right?
Yeah, but is it here, is it there? I mean, is this, is this a wide curve?
To me, the curve is right, right in here, where-
Trying to show point downhill.
What?
It's just, I didn't really focus on that, just trying to emulate point downhill.
I was just trying to visualize, okay, okay.
We're all doing this by hand here.
Okay, I was trying to visualize somebody trying to walk across the street from the artifacts side over, and it's like, okay, so, the curves don't, the curves do not look like they line up, they, both ends of north of West State to East State transition.
My concern is about the, the right way.
Mayor, I think if you look at page C2.
C2?
You might be able to see that better.
Okay.
Might be more clear.
C2.
Okay.
So, it's, is that intersection, actually, that diamond shape? I thought it was more square, I guess I've never looked at that.
What is it?
He's talking more down here, I think.
Where is the right of way that's shown here? I'm just making sure that the patio is outside of the right of way, and you tended to indicate that it was. Patio, garden?
Yeah.
It is.
Is it in the center?
It's outside the right of way and inside.
So?
It crosses through the right of way.
It's outside and inside?
Well, the patio area?
Yes.
We would, it is over the property line, it could be over the property line on the city property as well, if allowed.
That would be the revocable license.
There you go.
Doesn't she have to get permission from council?
It'd still be public space.
Exactly.
I think what John's saying is, they might do an improvement to the public, the public right of way, but it would still be public right of way, it would not be revocable license to take over each of the right of way. They might improve the sidewalk or have a design.
We're going to do all that, yes.
But if he has tables, he has to get a license.
Right.
If he has anything that's, that's not-
No.
It's outside of the-
He doesn't have to get a license.
Not on his own property.
We're talking about the right of way.
If he's on his own property, or if it's in the right of way, then we do issue benches and seats on the city streetscape permits, most of the ones uptown that are on the sidewalks now have them from us.
Yeah, they just require certain-
I just wanted to clarify one. Okay, so down here. Yeah. So is the right of way?
Okay.
Right of the street, right here?
Must be.
Okay, John, question. Just still about the right of way. Can you, wait a minute, just for a second, please. I know right of way is always-
The property line is right there.
Mm-hmm, and what's the right?
The right of way in front, if there isn't one, that on the side, we can have that dotted line is the right of way.
And so is the right of way, right here, I imagine?
Yeah, with the property line. We don't have a setback there, if you mind.
No, I was just wondering why the blue grate, the gate are required, you know?
Because it's balcony extended, or was that?
Right, it was over the sidewalk.
Over the property line.
It was over the sidewalk.
Which is the property line.
Yeah.
And you're not going to do that?
No, not going to do that.
We're not, but I just wanted to know about where the right of way line is on the side, it's about the same as on the other side of the street.
We're back about six inches.
On the other side of the street. It's equal, equitask.
Well, this is larger. This, this sidewalk is going to be twice as wide as the line that's on the street.
Mm-hmm, okay, if you get it.
Is there any other comment, questions?
No, I'll move that we approved 15-09, Title 41, BP Station Court Street.
With the added-
There's all the recommendations from our staff.
Right, but we wanted to make sure there was two additional accessible parking.
Good accessible parking.
Don't say two, we'll say-
Needs required.
As per state, yeah, per state requirement.
Yes, that works to me.
Okay.
Another two motion.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? I have, Nancy Bane opposes, everyone else approves.
And I'd like to state that I'm not opposed to the building or anything else, but I do think the parking on the first floor is a problem that we will see again and again in-
Okay, so-
Precedent, precedent.
Just, just to take two seconds out here, as the planning commissioner, we can actually determine what that ratio should be eventually.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so maybe the homework that-
We've been doing it for weeks or months, years, right?
Not, not, not determining a ratio of what the footprint should be for commercial versus parking.
Well, we'll see, right after they do Columbus Road.
Okay, I'll hold my breath.
Okay, now.
Let's see, case number, moving right along, case number 15-10, Integrated Services, Charles Street, Title 41.
Again, you may remember an open communication three weeks ago on this, but again, a quick synopsis, the Charles Place Housing Project is proposed for five Charles Street, this is the current location of a car wash, the property has been purchased along with four Euclid by Integrated Services, the site is located just off East State Street, directly behind Donato's Pizza, the surrounding zoning is B3 along the East State Street corridor to the south of the property, and R1 recently changed from R2 to the immediate north of the property. The proposed use will be a three-story mixed-use building consisting of both commercial and residential, the commercial first floor space is still to be determined, the two-story residential above will consist of three two-bedroom units and four one-bedroom units for a total of seven units and 10 beds. The four Euclid structure is proposed to be used for additional office space, and it has been calculated in for all the calculations here on the staff report. Again, the site is owned B3, a general business zone, so the use is permissible, the maximum height is three-story, 39 feet, where three and a half story, 45 feet is allowed, the front yard setback requirement is zero, they do have a setback about one foot nine inches, the side yard setbacks are more than adequate, rear yard setbacks, since it's a B3, that butts in our zone, is required to be 30 feet, and it is 30 feet, lot coverage is not a requirement in a B3, it is in the flood hazard, and I'll go over that here briefly, parking, 26 required parking spaces, and those numbers are determined because of the number of efficiency units within the building are required to have two parking spaces per one bedroom, so that's why there is much more parking required than the amount of bedrooms that there are, and it also accommodates for the three parking spaces for the office building, or the, which is the old house at Four Euclid. 14, bicycle, 14 spaces, I estimate should be required, and they only showed 12 provided on the site, so we'll need to increase that by two parking, or two bicycle spaces. Dumpster is provided, again, they'll have to go to the shade tree commission, they have, I'm estimating 15 trees required, I'm going to sit here and say, I don't know how many are provided, because I don't know the, what's a large tree, small tree, medium tree, than your list that you had. Again, from the fire chief's standpoint, it's the same comments, enunciator panel, lockbox, et cetera, and he's requesting that we may need an secondary exit that leads to the rear stairwell, but that'll probably be determined more once we know what the first floor use will be. Captain Harvey from APD had a concern that they might want some more exterior lighting on the property, and especially in the parking lot area. City planner Paul Logue stated that the site is in the flood fringe, base flood elevation is 637.6, the plans indicate the building will be elevated to 639, we will require flood certificate upon completion of the project and, and a flood hazard application at the time of construction. As far as engineering and public works, a few comments listed there, that they have been shared with them, with the, with the architects, basically calling out for new sections of curb and sidewalk versus the existing, the ADA warning dums do not need to be included at the driveway crossings, only proper slopes, and then some miscellaneous information about BMPs on stormwater that will require, and some other comments for the water lines, tap locations, but all very generic type notes. I included in the map, or in the packet with you, you will see this page here that shows the current zoning, and I highlighted where the site is at, so you can see that it is in the B3, and with the R2 adjacent to it, or, excuse me, R1 now, the only R2 remaining is to the east of the property, a little bit there. And then the next page is a, this one here is an oversight that I showed, highlighted in black, all the properties currently owned by Integrated Services, how their projects tying all together, with a dotted line, a proposed maybe walk on from one site to the other, so. That being said, we'll let the architect or applicant speak from there.
No, that's just the only R2 that's, the next, in the chair.
My name is David Moran, I work for RBC Architects. I think he covered pretty much everything about the outline, you guys, questions, or?
Well, okay, I see that one of, one of the submissions here, of course, is a crosswalk between Charles and Graham, is that actually property, or that is Graham?
No, and I just-
This is probably site.
We just threw that in there, yeah.
Okay, the other one, of course, is the mention in the narrative about Four Euclid.
Yeah.
Is that a building that's going to be used and tied into this, and?
They, anyway, it certainly currently owns that building, and it's not being tied into this project specifically, but it has the potential for a small little office building that they'll house there.
And I did count that in on the calculations for parking and everything else.
What do you mean?
If the house was be, to be converted into an office, then it's required to have so many parking spaces for the office space, and I did calculate that into the parking requirements here.
So that, at this point in time, is a residential house, that's not conforming because it's a B3 zone?
That is correct.
Okay, just, I'm trying, again, when you start talking about two buildings, I start thinking APD and that Title 41, that's why I'm asking what's going on here.
How did it come to be that existing single-family homes are non-conforming?
The zone changed, I guess, I don't know, probably was built before the zoning was in there, right? Was that the whole complex, that from 50s?
See, we have all of original divot, and, that's a B2 zone, and there's single-family homes that are non-conforming, and there've been people trying to get variances to continue, I believe they've been denied.
Every house on the west side is non-conforming, by side yard setbacks and front yard setbacks, just about, so.
What?
Six Euclid. Do you own that land, or does Integrated Services own that land?
No, that's, that's a gem, that used to be a Euclid plumbing, now it's the Gem place?
Six is Cool Digs.
What is it called?
Cool Digs.
Cool Digs, yeah, yeah.
Colorful neighbors.
Because we could see something going there.
Well, it's a business right now, and it was a business, I remember plumbing, because I got a water view from that many, many years ago.
Half-business, half-rental.
Was that, was it called, Roland, okay, yeah.
There is an apartment in that building as well.
There is, really?
Yep.
And that's a- A B3?
Yep.
And that's grandfather's inn?
Yep.
Okay. Just wondering, learn things about the neighborhood all the time.
Well, oh, on, the last time we met, three weeks ago, Nancy, you have your question about increasing density, and I think, and John brought this up, but we're, we're not increasing the number, the Grand Avenue project has 10 beds, and so does this one, even though there's more units, there's the same number of beds that's-
Compared to the other project?
Compared to the other project, yes.
You asked last time about the size relation on this versus 11 Graham, or 10, 10 Graham.
So the same number of people, but spread over more units?
Right, there's more singles than this one, which then required more parking spots.
I'm curious as to why you're talking about Eden and an office space when you have a commercial first floor- a commercial first-floor space to be determined.
Excuse me, what?
Excuse me, Euclid.
Euclid, what, where did I use, I don't know.
Eden.
Yeah, it's further down.
I, so...
It looks kind of funny, that little way with the parking on both sides, and especially in the front yard, which, at least to me, it does.
What was your question? I didn't...
She wanted to know why are you...
I'm hearing of proposed office on Euclid and yet-to-be-determined commercial space on Charles. Charles, thank you.
Kevin Gillespie could speak more of the future of this commercial space with the idea of a neighborhood clinic ideas, I think is the intent that they want to put in the commercial space.
You know, that's a future use?
Yes. We're building just a shell currently.
But what wound up on the first floor commercial on Graham?
We had, we appealed for a variance, and it's residential.
The thrust of this is not to have any variances required.
Right.
I believe there's been statements from some of the neighbors saying, why not go for the variance, the business on the first floor, and not raise the height so much?
Well, I don't know at what point, but everybody should have received some email correspondence from surrounding residents in the neighborhood.
That's what I was referring to.
At some point, we will open this up to people who are in the room right now for additional comment, anybody who lives in the neighborhood. Right now, let me go ahead and try to exhaust all the questions coming from the commission first, and then anyone else can come up to the podium after that and make any comments that they wish.
So, some of the questions, can I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So it looks like parking is supposed to the south and north of the building, the proposed building site. So, loses the car wash.
Correct.
I'm looking at the, there's a GIS map here showing the car wash location. If I look at your proposed, it looks like you're adding some green space between the lots, is that what I'm looking?
Yes.
No, it was concrete for the parking, for the car wash.
Right.
It's going to be green space to the east, I guess it is.
Correct, we have the 30% required green space, and it's also an integral part of the requirements for the housing project itself, so that, yes, we're increasing green space between the east, on the east side of the building.
And that'll extend all the way to the lot line, it looks like.
Yes.
Okay.
Which is all fenced in, yeah.
Okay. Now, tell you that I haven't been in the Cool Digs, but I thought their entrance was on the Charles side, is it, or is it on the Euclid side?
Euclid's on Euclid.
Okay. Well, actually, I drove around looking at it yesterday, or day before yesterday, picked up the sign that fell over.
Thank you.
Title 41 sign, because the window blew down. And I thought it said entrance, I looked past the car wash through it, I didn't, I should have washed my car too, because it's got a lot of pollen, but I looked past it and I thought it said entrance on that, but maybe it was saying entrance on Euclid side, I didn't read the whole thing.
Yeah, they have a few growing beds in the backyard of that property.
Okay.
And I would think they're trying to attract customers from, who will wash their cars.
Okay, so, green space to the east, looks like a strip will continue to the Euclid side of your four Euclid drive.
Yep.
Let's see, the curb cut is going to, are there curbs on Charles?
Continue with curb cut now.
Yeah, yeah, but further down, I'm trying to remember where the curves stop on the far east side. Somewhere on some of those roads, they do have curbs, I saw.
Right, I don't know.
They have any town...
We don't have sidewalks.
What?
We don't, we don't have sidewalks.
No sidewalks, but you have curbs. I'm trying to remember. Okay. So, basically, you're going to whittle down the curb cut to two entrances, north and south of the building.
Correct. And...
Main entrance is going to be on the south side.
Two, on the south side for the commercial, yes.
And for the residential?
North side for the residential.
And I think this one does have plenty of handicap.
Yes. And yeah, the whole building will be handicap accessible, we're putting an elevator in, and we're defining several units that will be constructed handicap accessible, but the others will have blocking in that could be converted to, on the third floor also.
Okay.
So is the dumpster enclosure moved off this property, is that why, am I looking at this?
I looked at the entire site as one, with the four parcels, two structures on it, with the new building and the existing house.
Have these properties been combined?
No.
What's that?
I asked if the properties have been combined.
That'll be a requirement at the time that they're building. It'll have to be, otherwise the parking is not part of, on their parcel, the parking requirements. The parking that's on the four Euclid site is part of this as well. The whole site will have to be combined into one.
I just didn't see that in the review, so...
So the dumpster's on the southeast corner of the parking?
It's by the four Euclid house.
Okay.
So the truck would pull in and get it straight on.
From the Charles Street side?
Correct.
Okay. I'm having a little bit of a problem with this, I hate to say it, that you're talking about combining those lots, but it's not a PUD.
Then have to be a PUD in a B zone, does not require a PUD with multiple structures on the same site, that's only in an R zone.
Okay. But we're still talking about two structures and the dumpsters on the other one. So, okay, let's say four Euclid gets sold.
It won't be able to, because the parking for part of this building is on that site as well. It'll have to be tied together.
Tied together or combined?
All combined, the lots will have to be combined into one parcel, all four parcels that are there now. Three on Charles and one on Euclid will have to all be combined into one large parcel, an L-shaped parcel.
So are my questions, so, sure you have some?
And the space adjacent to the proposed project that's in between Graham and Charles, that's...
The water bed place, the mattress place there.
Okay, all right.
What? The new color?
Yeah, there we go.
Is it blue? I thought it was like a tan.
Are there any other questions right now?
I sound like a complain about the back end not painted, based on residents.
Any questions or comment?
No.
Does anybody care to come from the audience here and speak one way or another? Yeah, just come up, please, and identify yourself and where you live, please.
I'm Barry Thomas, I live at 14 Charles Street, and I'm representing myself, but also I have questions and comments from the immediate neighbors that have been raised with me that I'd like to present here. There are seven family residences, single-family residences in that one block of Charles, five of the owners have expressed a concern about the height of the building, the increased floors, and I'm wondering how, once the floodplain restrictions or requirements are taken into account, how much higher is that building going to be than, say, the duplexes beside it?
Foot and a half above what current base flood elevation is, what the actual grade is out there, we don't know right now, but Paul can probably answer that, but it's much higher than what it is.
Much higher than... We'd have to get a survey to determine that height, but the base flood elevation, again, without having a survey, we wouldn't know, but that's at the very far reach of the floodplain. In fact, as it's mapped right now, only a portion of the property is within the 100 year floodplain, and so you're talking, my guess would be a very slight grade increase, two, three feet, probably.
Well, there's some concern that a three-story building is not really in keeping with the neighborhood, it's primarily residential, or I know that it's a B3 zone. Are there any, we've heard that the businesses could be determined, and I know that Kevin has indicated a clinic, perhaps, maybe a clinic. Are there any restrictions on what kind of business could go into the bottom floor, residential top?
It's a B3, so it's, you know, probably one of our most open zoning areas as far as type of businesses that can get in there.
Okay, so it could be, very high-traffic business at some point, rather than a neighborhood clinic with, I think Kevin said two FDU doctors, something like that. Anyway, not much traffic, we are told, but that could change in the future, so that's a concern, because the traffic in that area already with Donato's is tricky, but not dangerous. People making that turn from East State Street and making a sharp turn into Donato's have, it's led to some close calls, and we'll be having access and exiting onto Charles, like most businesses in that area, exit onto East State Street. This will increase the traffic flow on an already busy street. People like to take advantage of that light, and so we get traffic from all around.
If I may add, we did consider that, and I did think about that, and not knowing what the commercial use is right now, that's hard to determine, but I was thinking that no matter what this commercial use would be, I didn't imagine the traffic would be any higher volume than what a car wash currently is, so therefore, I didn't see where the traffic volume would increase that much, if any.
Well, it was good news for Mitch, the owner of the car wash, it was never very busy.
Okay, successful car wash.
Let's see, well, basically, the neighbors that I've spoken with would, of course, prefer to see a two-story residential building without the business on the ground floor, and I know they would support a variance to that effect, rather than having a three-story building with the increased traffic. I think Kevin's not too keen on that, but we would certainly, we would certainly support a petition for a variance, keep it a two-story, all residential. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the BZA, correct? We don't have the authority to issue that variance? Please state your name and residence, please.
Mayor of Hewlton, Charles Street. I wouldn't underscore what Barry had to say. First of all, I'm surprised at the nebulous characterization of the commercial use on the first floor. There are a number of scenarios in which traffic would increase, for example, a carryout. Our biggest fear in terms of traffic would be a business that would have very heavy traffic at certain times of the day, which would encourage people to actually park on the street, creating a bottleneck on that street. We are a heavily trafficked street on Charles, but our main concern is the height of the building, and there are strong objections on Charles Street to the height of the building. The immediate area does not have any three-story buildings, I think the entire subdivision does not have three-story buildings. Holiday Inn is three-and-a-half stories, I think, the very maximum, but all along the residential corridor there on State Street, there are not three-story buildings. And partly, residents think it would stick out, it would be intrusive, buildings that peer down into your yards are an invasion of privacy. You know, Charles Street is, the first block, is not a high-scale neighborhood, we have modest houses. Euclid, they're even more modest. But we believe that the commission should take into consideration the impacts on the neighborhood as well. It's, the Graham Street project was kept to two stories, partly out of consideration for the neighborhood. I know a variance will take further effort, but in this case, the neighborhood would be fully supportive of a variance. And I would think that for the safety and convenience of the residents at the proposed housing project, housing on just the first two floors would actually be more beneficial rather than on a second and third floor. So, residents of Charles Street, at least five of the seven that I've talked to, that Barry referred to, have strong objections to a three-story building. Thank you.
Anyone? Please come forward. Yeah, does anybody else wish to speak? Go ahead. Please state your name and, I guess, the business and address, your address.
Okay, well, I'm Kevin Gillespie from Integrated Services, I'm the director, and I'm also a resident of the neighborhood. And so, there's no need to be vague about what our planning is for the first floor, because the funders are perfectly aware, including the Ohio Capital Corporation and Hocking Valley Bank. We intend to be an innovator in integrated healthcare, hence integrated services. We've been working on this for 20 years, and there are some pretty nice opportunities in the healthcare sector to do some pretty creative work. And our innovation is intended to be a very small-scale, neighborhood-oriented, holistic healthcare, holistic from the point of view of people's physical health needs and their mental health needs, all at one place, with lots of feelers out into the neighborhood and into the community for things like community gardens. Now, we won't be able to have a community garden at that particular spot, but lots of, we're increasing our focus on people at the aging time of their lives who wish to remain in their homes and yet get robust supports in their own homes for independence. So, not only will it be a walkable, neighborhood-oriented, small, very small-scale, integrated healthcare venture, and this is, this is a bit risky, and we're going to invest in it, but I would say the main part, part of the innovation is making sure that mental health and physical health needs are seen as one, in one person. But also, the, doing innovation on a small scale with a target, it'll likely be called East Side Healthcare Associates, and targeting the east-side neighborhoods, probably both of them, far east side and near east side, that's the innovation, too, learning to do things efficiently. We have an example of a larger-scale innovation of Ohio Health taking over Oblenus and consolidating assets into a large conglomeration, whatever you want to call it, of assets. We're going to, we're going to go, and we may well seek affiliations with Ohio Health, for sure, but the innovation is exactly the one to keep that unique space there that's part State Street, part Walmart, and part, you know, I lived there in a house on Grand Park Boulevard, you know, toward the back, but keep, keep the neighborhood integrity and the uniqueness of the neighborhood intact. So that's what we're in the early stages, but it's going pretty well, I don't see us not doing this. This is what our plan is, to build out, and David, I mean, the way I'm understanding our Ohio Capital Corp. finance, we're going to build out the ground floor... out the ground floor, the commercial space, the health care space, at the same time. We're going to go ahead and build it out right now, so I didn't want there to be some cloud of mystery about what we intend to do. We will build this beautiful, I mean, I'm so proud of this building. I told Barry, you know, we're really proud of this building. And David may want to speak to the profile. We have pushed by use of, creative use of the attic space, we've pushed the profile down as far as we can get it. So we're providing a high-quality, beautiful building. And then, the only thing I can say is the car wash is going away, and Mitch claims he does a heck of a good business. So the car wash will go away, and that's a fact, and that's the only loss that I can think of. You know, there are four duplexes and Cool Digs, that kind of flat block building that surrounds it, and then Donato's. So it kind of is a perfect, in my mind, if you look at sort of like the topography of that flow of State Street into the full, you know, into the residential, this is our best shot. We think it's a beautiful, wonderful transition into the neighborhood, and the design is optimum, as far as I can tell. And the funders love it, I can tell you that. David, I don't know if you want to talk about the profile.
Well, you said it, closer to Charles Street, street side, we have the, you can see on the site elevation there, it appears to be a two-story building. We have corners, and it is three stories, so it's going to be.
And, oh, there's another thing that I'd say about the design. The clinic orientation is 100% oriented and open to State Street. The residential orientation goes back, there are four kind of boxy-looking duplexes that sit right there, right now. So even though it's been designed recently, what actually sits there are duplexes right now, four of them. So the residential is totally oriented on the other side of the building, toward the flow of the neighborhood. And the parking is totally separate. As far as the traffic, I, you know, who knows? But I would say in total, it would be far less, this is my guess, it's only a guess, it would be less than the car wash. And then people would go and have their encounters in the clinic, and then, you know, it's not going through a car wash, one after the other, where at times they're lined up. You go there, you stay while, and part of what we're hoping to accomplish with the small scale is a longer contact with your health professional. We're trying to slow it down, if anything, not speed it up. We're trying to get everything to slow down, and be more about health and people's well-being, and to build a better quality health care experience in a smaller scale oriented toward the neighborhood. So we're all for slowing down and reducing, I mean, reducing the flow of, you know, mechanistic health care. That's the whole intent of the design of the practice itself. And I'm looking at the person who's going to lead the innovation for the design, who's working at University Medical Associates right now, so in a partnership with them.
I think one of my concerns is while you do meet the height requirement, envisioning that at some point you might be interested in the Cool Digs property, making that a whole block, then if you were proposing to do basically the same thing on Euclid, I can see now where that height, combined with an additional building, unless it was a two-story, then tends to become more obtrusive and more not what the neighborhood is, as opposed to say, I'm trying to envision the house on Utah, and how that really stands out from the community. And then, looking at this building now and the possibility of one like it on Euclid.
Well, in terms of design, that's exactly what we would attempt to, now, that's highly speculative, Mitch ain't selling, you know, it's not happening. So, I don't have any plans for that, I don't have any designs on that, no plans, but the example that you raised, from a design point of view, is exactly what we're trying to avoid. And I believe we've accomplished it, I know we have. Boy, oh boy, have we thought about the design of this building and that very issue. And I think it'll be an extremely strong addition to the profile of the neighborhood as you move through that space. Your point is well-taken about the Cool Digs building, and yet, we're not considering that right now. So, you know, I don't want to, I don't have anything to say about that.
Okay. Let's see, since the two individuals have already spoken, who wrote letters that I was going to read if you weren't here, but you have been able to speak towards that, and I think that the letters that you sent in are pretty indicative of any other comment that came in, so I don't think there's any reason at this point to read additional letters into the record. Or does someone want to?
Probably not. Your choice, though, Richard. I would point out, I was concerned about the height.
Why don't you go ahead and just propose?
We'll include the letters in the record. That we include the letters in the record.
If I may, another request, what's up, a green buffer area? And what, I mean, will that come through the Shatree Commission? How can we kind of try to buffer between the residential and the commercial?
According to David, he says they've met the 40% green space requirement, which is not even a requirement, that they did to try to meet the standards for an R, as an R-zone would require. And yes, there will be, as you see on the drawings, a fence as that, per Shatree requirements as well, a buffer, which the fence is included, along the north and the east property line, separating it from the residential zone. So it's on the site plan.
A nice wooden fence?
Yes. Graham did, I see your fence. It was about the end of the site.
One of the problems on Graham, though, is that the fence isn't that high. Had there been shrubbery at the same time, there would have been much better screening. And indeed, the comprehensive plan says that while both are not required, in many cases, both would be desirable, with green screening and a fence.
Okay. John, did you want to say something?
I actually have a question.
Sure, why don't you come to the podium, state your name and your address, please?
John F. Wards, 130 Leota. The buildings at the Ford's duplexes, six, seven, eight, and nine Charles Street, from what I recall, those buildings are one foot above the floodplain. So for, if that's, holds true to the, I mean, if they have to be one foot above the floodplain, those built, the new project will have to come up probably six feet to level out so they could be one foot above the floodplain. So it can be built as it stands, where the car wash is, without any additional?
Without having a survey, that's hearsay in my mind. We don't have a survey to confirm how high that would be.
The only reason I say that is, is because I was the contractor on the buildings of six, seven, eight, and nine, and that was a requirement then.
It would have been if it was built prior to nineteen.
So what's the requirement now?
Still one foot above the base flood elevation, but without having a, without having the actual survey of the project, the duplex, maybe five or six feet, it might be four feet, we don't know.
Right, 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 right. So then you take the, let's just use general numbers. Let's say it's four feet, let's just say it's four feet. Then you go up another 39 feet from that point, for two and a half stories, is that correct?
Yes, I guess so, yeah.
So for to say that the building wouldn't be much taller than, let's say, the duplex, and say that the skyline or whatever is going to be somewhat drastic. Is that correct? So this building, so Donato's, then you have a, basically, another story above what the duplexes are, is that correct?
I'm confused by your line of thought, Paul.
Oh, so the line of thought is, the line of thought is.
You have to be seven foot above the base flood elevation. The code allows for, if you bring something up to grade, if you, you're allowed to import fill into our flood.
I understand that, that's all I'm saying.
And you're building on top of.
Thirty-nine feet from that point, one foot above the.
If that is, if your number is correct, then yes, that would be accurate.
Okay, that's what I was asking. And what was said earlier was that the height of the new construction would be about the same as the duplex, well, that's not correct.
I did not say that, did I?
No, I don't think anyone.
Well, that's what it sounded like to me. That's why I was asking if, when it was explained, it almost sounded like that they were going to start from where the car wash is and start building up from there, and you did say that it might take a little bit of fill, but you didn't know how much.
I do not have it in front of me, Mayor, maybe you can help me, I didn't read the code, but I think even in R1, you're allowed two and a half stories, 35 feet.
That's possible.
So this is only four.
That's possible. I was just curious, and what he was saying was, it sounded to me, the way it was said, was that this building, the new construction, would be somewhat about the same height, and I don't believe that's a correct statement.
I don't think he said that. He said that there are high duplexes next door to it, but I don't think he's going to, it is going to be higher than the duplexes. That's a given.
So that, my point was, is some things, the integrity of the neighborhood, is a three-story building behind Donato's make a big difference for the whole Far East End. Because those are Bs all the way down through there.
It is B, yes. You're questioning the integrity of a B3 zone, rather than a residential zone?
Possibly, or are you opening up a can of worms for any B going down through there? Because obviously, they're conforming.
Oh, yes.
There's no can of worms, I mean, that's.
Well, yes or no, yes or no, that remains to be seen.
Conceptually, they could put a three-story office building right there.
Correct.
Okay. And probably the limitation at that point would be the square footage, in terms of how much parking they require to do that. And as a B3, they really wouldn't have to have any green space required either.
Right.
Okay, so, you know, as much as I.
Well, I'll tell you the reason I'm up here anyway, is because I was called to come down and explore, as the neighbors, because my parents owned the duplexes. And they were kind of somewhat concerned of, what do I think about it all? I mean, in reality, certainly, I do not want something that tall, but, you know, if they conform, they conform, that's all there is to it. But they called me to say, you know, is that something that the neighborhood, yes or no, I don't actually live in the neighborhood. As far as traffic up and down Charles Street possibly decreased, I would hope so.
I would.
At the end of Charles Street, going across, I mean, you have your rec center and all that, I certainly hope it wouldn't be increased traffic. I mean, that would be my concern. And certainly, if you have enough buffer in between seven Charles Street, green space, whatever, I don't have, you know, I obviously can't say anything about that. We do have a fence up there for the car wash, you know, for obvious reasons, but I don't know if a three-story, I don't know those answers.
Well, I did have some concern about the height, in terms of three stories, but a couple things, looking at the footprint of the building, it's fairly set back, the parking that's on the north side provides, my concern would be shading of the adjacent property owner. But the fact is, you have a parking spaces lot between the actual building that you see there and the next adjacent property. So therefore, I worry about, on the other hand, I start thinking about it, saying, okay, in terms of a three-story building, it actually create a sound shadow away from East State Street, which has high traffic in it, so I'm a little less.
It can't, anything, it's got to be quieter than the car wash.
Precisely, yes. And you're.
And I agree with some, you know, I certainly don't disagree with the man's plan at all. There's been concern about the height, and I do know about where the level of the dirt has to come up, because I already went through it. So, precise, I can't tell you that, but I know that building, seven, is one foot above the floodplain. So if you can envision that, I would say, I'd say at least five feet it would have to be built up. That's my guess. And as far as trying to compare something, is there more increased traffic on Graham, with the project on Graham, behind the park store? I've seen nothing but good things there. I don't, like I said, I just was curious. They're unhappy, so I thought I'd come and help them out as far as, and I'm actually somewhat concerned.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? One of the commission members had to excuse herself, so we still have, you have to leave?
No, I said, I can't imagine why. May I ask my question?
Sure.
Would you be open to not only the fencing, but maybe providing some shrubbery or something great? You know, for this purpose.
If you go to the site plan, we have a landscaping schedule that shows all different landscapes and the technicalities of our property. AK Services established already of styling, good by, you know, the plant, of trees, shrubs, lots of grasses, and that's our intent is to keep that being open on through the site and up to the, to the parts.
Can you go up to the mic, please? I'm sorry.
Yeah. We're missing all the good parts, aren't we?
Councilperson Cochran, who also lives on Charles, has approached me about planning for the greening of the space, and she's aware that it's a B3 urban space, and it's a transition. But, you know, she, if you know her, you know that she has some creative ideas about edible landscaping and that sort of thing, which we're very open to working with her and the neighborhood. And please understand that this has been communicated for, gee, close to two years with the Far East Side Neighborhood Association and many, many, many neighbors throughout the neighborhood. And certainly, I've talked to Barry about it over time, including recently. And so, yes, we want to make this as green and as inviting and fit, and not just fit, but add to the value and the aesthetics of the neighborhood with a high value on green. Some of the questions I can't ask, because, you know, maybe we have to have a fence for some reason that I don't know, I have no idea, I would defer to David on that, but we'll try to make it as green as we possibly can.
I appreciate that.
Okay, and if I say, look correctly, it's about 3,000 square feet of, a little bit under 3,000 square feet of business and commercial. The expectation is that you'd have, in terms of a clinic, two or three people in there, one or two?
Yes, extremely small by clinic standards. We're working on another one with a partner far away, which is considered to be a small clinic, and it's 20,000 square.
Okay.
It'll be, it'll be a micro, intended to be neighborhood purpose, up to.
Okay, I'm aware that professional offices of some nature, medical, et cetera, are allowed in R-zones as well, so if my memory is correct on that, is that.
Well, something else that I can definitely point out here, too, is I did the calculations for the parking at one per 300, which would be a medical office-type thing. A carryout can never happen, because it's a one per 200, and they would have to get a variance for more parking, if they wanted to put a carryout. So your high-use restaurant carryouts would not be permissible on the first floor, that's based on the amount of parking that is provided, that is based on medical office-type numbers right now.
What if the clinic falls through? And city code also. This site is risky. City code also requires, if you're within 200 feet of an R2, which is now an R1, you can't have a carryout.
Drive-through driveway.
Right, you can't have a drive-through.
Can't have a drive-through.
So we're.
Surely, at least in its current, we can all agree that Integrated Services would not be supporting any.
Drive, carryout, I had my idea, I don't think it's that integrated.
Any other comments?
I guess I'd like to summarize, and I've talked to the people on Charles Street, and I think that it's pretty clear that in order to have the funding formula they have, they need the clinic on the first floor. I just want to explain my position as we move forward, because I don't see it happening. I mean, I guess I can, I think it's good, I wish maybe they had talked earlier, or, you know, I don't know if you communicated with them to the extent or even knew, but it seems to me that this is a package that can't be altered, to me, anyway.
Is there a difference between the Graham project and this project?
I didn't have any. I didn't have any part in that, but my, that was, I'm trying to clarify why I think that your proposal, although good, is not going to work in this situation.
Again, I think the stress of this is to keep it as a Title 41 and not seek variances, having been burnt before on the previous Graham activity. I'm aware that clinic or professional offices in terms of doctors are allowed in our zones, so therefore, I look at this as not so much even an inclusion, you know, intrusion into an R-zone. Again, my concern is at times where the footprint in terms, and we have no laws about it shadowing another house. You know, I've seen too many houses that go up and add two more stories, and next thing you know, you can't grow the plants on your windowsill anymore because they're all gone, the sunlight's gone. But the footprint of this is not, to me, a big problem. In the future, of course, we're looking at both the Euclid place as well as the mattress place. They're pretty much two building sites that are on their decline eventually. And those will be the next steps to look at in terms of intensification. But as this stands, I don't see as a, as a intrusion to the R-zone, and it's really a B3 zone that's being modified. You know, it's something that's even less intrusive than a car wash and other things that could go in there, literally. I mean, you could stick a lot of things in there, that would be, you know, you could duplicate the neighborhood twice, you know, at this point.
I do have a question for Mr. Gillespie in terms of security. On Graham Drive, are you aware if police activity has increased any with the housing that you have there? And how do we, how would you have somebody on-site for this complex?
Well, I mean, I just need to, you'd have to check with the police, everything's.
I did. One domestic since the building's been built.
So it's been a remark, from my, from my point of view, it's been a tremendous success. Everything is very stable. The thing that I would say about the level of service is, much like Graham Drive, because of the nature of part of the funding and because of the mission of integrated services, all of the residents, well, I should say, some resident of each apartment will have a diagnosed mental illness, because there's some state funding for that purpose. It's not the majority of the funding, but it's, is totally capable of fully independent living as any other citizen, you, me, or anybody else. But we stand ready with close proximity with tailored services from very not intensive to extremely intensive in quality, well, not quality, but quantity and duration. We have 24/7 on call staff, and we can deliver whatever. Like, there's been some talk of, my mind, I feel challenged to think about aging recently. So we, because I'm getting old, partly. You know, I think about a person who might, they're all no, the steps are all no-step. Not every bedroom is no-step, but they're all no-step. It would be appropriate for somebody who would possibly be at the end of their life and needing that kind of assistance. We'll deliver whatever tailored assist, a fully independent citizen needs to be successful in their housing. And I think we stood tall on Graham Drive, and we'll do the same next job. But there is no 24/7 staff, and yet we have 24 some call. So, you know what I mean? There's no, there's no front desk or anything like that.
Okay, thank you. Unless there's anything else from the commission, does someone want to put forth a motion?
I'll move to accept the plans. What conditions do we have? Shade tray still?
Just general conditions from staff, what's along with shade tray approval.
Include the letters.
Yeah, include the letters and the correspondence from the citizens as well. But frankly, since it meets all the intents and purposes for applications for Title 41s to proceed, and hope they continue to be good neighbors and build a good fence, because you know what they say, good fences make good neighbors. They have strawberries.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous? One abstention?
One abstention.
Abstentions, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's.
Okay. See, it's 2:00 right now.
Couple people waited about two hours. No, I mean, I just know that these people waited two hours.
Okay, so that communications, the West Union Street fire rebuild update?
Well, I have in front of you a rather large packet that was given to me with, basically, it's the applications that's going before the planning or the board of zoning appeals next Tuesday evening. A letter of support from the Athens City Historic Preservation Commission for the variances being granted. It was addressed to the mayor and to the appropriate board of zoning appeals and city council, and their narrative statements, et cetera. So it's, I brought it forth for you to look at and look at the presentations from each applicant, and I can let them speak a little bit more to it. So if they, they're all, all three applicants are here. Got it. Michael, you speaking, Gary Hunter's here in regards to 12 and 14 West Union. Scott Nysley's here in regards to 10, which is the Uptown Dog Building, and Guy Phillips in regards to 14 and 16 West Union. So the three applicants for the board of zoning appeals are here to speak to it.
Okay, so, any one of them care to come up first? Mr. Hunter? If you could just identify yourself and your firm.
My name's Gary Hunter. I'm the trustee for the Cary Larch Trust, which is a benevolent nonprofit trust that exists solely for the purpose of helping people in Athens County and Athens City that cannot afford to pay their hospital bills at a Blinn's Hospital or Children's Hospital in Columbus. My purpose in talking with you today is really threefold. One, I wanted to bring you up to date on the project as it's developing for the Cary Larch Trust, which owns 12 and 14 West Union Street. Two, to ask you to support the project, or in the alternative, indicate at least that you're willing to start a dialogue or a study committee, I don't really care what you call it, to look into the issue of the relevancy of parking requirement in the downtown area, residential on-site parking in the downtown area, whether or not that continues to be relevant in the city of Athens. And third, to actually start that process, in which I'm willing to sit on a study committee or whatever you want to call it, if you want me to do that, to start that dialogue in that process. First, to bring you up to date on what's going on, the matter is, as John indicated, going to the zoning board Tuesday evening, which is why I really wanted to get on the communication with you today. The Cary Larch Trust is a little bit different in the other applicants in the sense that we are the only, as I know, only nonprofit on that street. So, you know, tax incentives in a way, income tax incentives and so forth are not really available to the Cary Larch Trust. From my perspective, and as I handed you, gave you earlier a copy of the presentation we'll be making to the zoning board minus exhibits that I attached, which are probably not relevant for your purposes. The difference in the Cary Larch Trust is, we don't have any of those kind of tax advantages to us. The trust being a nonprofit benevolent trust does not normally keep in a lot of money in reserve, because we spend it to help people in their hospital bills. However, we have, over the years, since I've been the trustee, and I've been the trustee for nearly 25 or 30 years now, tried to be good neighbors and tried to keep up the property in a historical nature. As most of you know that know me, the history of Athens is something that is of interest to me. I did the bicentennial book in 2005 on Athens County, and I continue to be interested in relevant. I personally think that West Union Street between Congress and Court Street, the north side, which is where we are, is your best example of Old Town Athens that currently exists. It's, the block prior to the fire was clearly head and shoulders the best example of Old Town Athens from the 1800s. I think all of the property owners now are trying to take that into consideration and restore, as a result of a fire that was none of our fault, we're basically essentially victims in the situation, to restore that neighborhood, that block, the north side in particular, to the best example of Old Town Athens. The properties that the trust owns has an additional criteria that I want to point out to you. It has the only, that I know of, Queen Anne-style structure that exists in downtown Athens. What I have done, I have met with in trying to keep all the options open, listened to all the input from everybody that's out there, I've met consistently with the mayor's office, service safety director, council members, other, the code office, other people of interest in Athens, to try to keep them up to date on what is going on. And we've taken a lot of those concerns and questions into consideration in our design, even though that's more expensive for the Cary Larch Trust to accommodate. The ones we've taken into consideration is the desire of adjoining property owners to preserve at least the front facade of 14 West Union, so that they can get tax incentives to assist them in the cost. That results in more costs to us unless there's, you know, some sort of other arrangement to maintain that 14 structure front facade. The other thing that the city, though, has wanted is that wants us to combine the lot, two lots that the trust owns into one building lot, which we're willing to do, and the proposal shows that. So essentially, what the trust is doing is creating two-building look front facade, and behind that front facade is one building. That building abuts right up against the lot, abuts right up against Varsity Theater Building. Previously, there was a small distance, about four or five feet, that allowed an exit in the back that went back to the alley, but there's no real direct access to the alley from that property that we own. The original plans that we had done called for 20 bedrooms at the site using a back exit. I vetoed those plans because I didn't want to get into being dependent upon other people, and I thought it was better to have the exits from the front. So the redesign is what you're seeing there, and it's down to 16 bedrooms, one of which is an efficiency. The Cary Larch Trust had 12 bedrooms over the two buildings in the past, and we believe those are grandfathered, and I believe, again, it's something that needs attention in your code. Your code seems to apply that if a grandfathered existence goes out of existence, you can't rebuild. That's more than 50% of the value, is my recollection. You can't rebuild without variances. Your grandfathering is lost. I don't believe that's really the law. You look at the state law from which the Athens zoning code is derived, it says that you lose the grandfathering if it's a voluntary destruction. So an involuntary destruction, you don't lose the grandfathering. So it'd be our position, going into the zoning board, that 12 of those spaces should have been proved as in the grandfathering situation by the code office and should not have gone to planning committee or the zoning board, but if they did, it doesn't matter, they're still grandfathered. Then you have, at least in our case, a need for four or five additional parking spaces under your current code. Four being my interpretation, because there are only four more bedrooms. Five being the code office's interpretation, because one of them being a studio apartment, a unit requires two parking spaces, even though it's one bedroom. That one kind of escapes me, but it's in your code. Be what it is, I think, you know, it's pretty clear, the Cary Larch Trust to build as proposed needs four or five, a variance for four or five parking spaces. I realize when I'm asking you to convene a parking study and to look at changing the code as to the relevancy of downtown parking, isn't going to happen before Tuesday night. So clearly, the Cary Larch Trust is in a situation of asking for the variances. But that doesn't stop me from asking you to look at the code, or at least begin a conversation on the code, as to what are we gaining or what is the necessity for the on-site parking requirement in the downtown area. And you'll see from some of the research that we've done, submitting to the zoning board, that in over 70% of the downtown cases, variances have been granted for, several of variances have been granted for parking in the downtown area. So it's a very high percentage where parking variances have been granted in some shape or form in the downtown area. I personally can't think of any reason why you need parking in the downtown area of Athens other than the code currently requires it. I can give you a lot of reasons why I think you don't need it, and that's why I think there should be a conversation. The, first of all, it's impossible on our site. Our site is, combining into one building, it is 37 and a half feet by 96 feet. There is no way you can provide parking underground in that configuration. If I keep the two buildings, it's 13 and a half feet and 27 feet or something like that width, any way you shape it, there, it's impossible. And if I can approach the board a minute, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
I'll give you the county auditor's office drawing of that particular block for 12 and, 12 and 14 are, are highlighted there. And you can really see from that aerial view that the narrowness, extreme narrowness on that particular block that exists where I don't think anybody could provide on-site parking. So that's, that's one issue I think you need to at least look at exceptions if you don't do it for the whole downtown. I think it needs to happen in the whole downtown for a number of other reasons. One is a safety issue, as far as I'm concerned. There are no alleys, legal city-owned alleys behind any of these structures. They're all private alleys in downtown Athens. In my case, they're on Union Street, I don't even abut on an alley, so you can't argue they can come up and down alleys. I don't think that really helps you too much in a way of safety concerns. Anyway, the other reason on safety is the blocks in Athens being laid out in 1797, let's see here, are small. They're really small blocks. I can go to Chicago, and I'll bet you the blocks are four to five times in length what these are in Athens. When you have a short block, and you start putting in curb cuts for front entrances and exits, you create a lot of traffic concerns in my mind. It also is a cost factor to the city of Athens. We have, we did some research with the auditor's office and the code office, and I asked the auditor's office to give me the revenue collected in downtown street parking only, excluding the parking garage, et cetera, for the last five years. And some of you may surprise, it surprised me, but some of you may not. It's $1.9 million you collected in the last five years in downtown street parking money. In the code office, we did some, I may have been in recorder's office, too, I think, did some research, and there were 99 property owners in the downtown area. Believe, you know, you can believe me or not, but this is what I'm going to point out to you. If you have, if you strictly enforce your downtown parking on-site requirements for the downtown area, at a minimum, you're going to have 99 curb cuts. A curb cut will take out a parking space. That results in taking out about 50.7% of your downtown parking spaces. That results in a loss of over $1 million to the city of Athens in revenue currently, based on a five-year period study. But there's more to that. That means you've taken out half of your downtown parking spaces, which are available for primarily, I assume, commercial use, not residential use. for primarily, I assume, commercial use, not residential use. If you assume some of those places are going to have an entrance and an exit on their property for the parking, not the same one, it gets worse, clear up to the point where you can argue that you have none, you have no parking lot, because it's all cut with curb cuts. Every piece of property has curb cuts throughout the city. Not in the best interest of the city, as far as I'm concerned. Is it needed? No, I don't think. And the argument I'll make for you there is, again, a study we did shows that 100 percent of the residential use, well, 100 percent of the use on the second and third floor right now in downtown Athens is residential. 100 percent of it is college student rentals, Ohio University students, who don't need parking. They don't need cars downtown. If you encourage off-street parking, you encourage them to have cars downtown. And all it does is create more congestion. The university does their best to try to block students, I think freshmen and sophomores, from even having cars. Are you saying no, Nancy?
Not sophomores anymore.
All right. The part, is the complexity going to change? I mean, when the code was adopted, that was not necessarily the case of the downtown, that all of the second, third floor was college student rentals. It's not likely to change in the near future. Again, the study we did, or obtained from the university, shows that in 2014, the residential population of Ohio University was about 29,000 here. Believe it or not, again, it seems high to me, but it clearly shows the trend that the university is not reducing its on-campus thing. They are building some dorms, no ways near enough to accommodate the influx of students that they have. So the downtown is going to remain as, second, third floor is going to remain as college student rentals. Do they need cars, particularly on the north side of Union Street between Congress and Court Street? No. They're half a block from campus. That's why they like that area. They can easily walk to campus, they can easily walk uptown. So there's really no reason there. The other safety concern, I kind of mentioned in my materials for the zoning board, is just the sheer traffic that is on West Union Street between Congress Street and Court Street. As I pointed out to the materials to the zoning board, there's basically five, five direct arteries that come into downtown Athens. You've got East State Street, you've got Stimson Avenue, you've got Columbus Road, you've got Union Street, and you've got Richland Avenue. Of those five, four, four of them will funnel you across West Union Street between Congress and Court Street. So the traffic is extremely heavy there. You start putting in curb cuts, I can't imagine how you could ever even get out, to be honest with you, onto the street, because you come up to the traffic light, you have two traffic lights, one at each end of the street, stopping traffic. I rarely find that I can get stopped sooner than beyond Chariarch property. Traffic just backs up that car before you can even get out. So it's another big problem. I don't think parking in the downtown area is economically beneficial to the city of Athens. I think that it is economically detrimental to our business customers on the ground floor. I don't think it's all a necessity for the residential units on the second and third floor. In fact, I would argue just the opposite. If you take away the parking, they won't bring the cars to campus, because we have, okay, Nancy, we value ourselves as being an enlightened city, and I think we are, and we have a robust public transportation system. We have a robust bicycle avenues created in the downtown area. You're encouraging them there to use the public transportation, use the bicycle avenues. You don't need cars.
So Gary, are you asking, at this point, to look at the parking situation or the parking code? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm asking three things, to start at the beginning. One, I'm asking you to endorse the project because, for historical significance downtown area, and the fact that providing parking is impossibility. You just heard John indicate that the Historical Society has endorsed it for historical purposes. Parking is impossible, cannot be provided onsite, so I would like you to endorse the project, or otherwise it meets code. Endorse the project for that reason. I gave you a drawing.
Right. I think we've got, we've got the parking idea.
The other I'm asking you to do is to convene a study group or whatever to look at the larger picture of the relevance in your code anymore in downtown parking.
Okay, you realize that, that request actually kind of hamstrings your sixth finding in the zoning board of appeals, basically not of a general nature, that shouldn't be changed in the law.
No, it's, no, it doesn't, in the sense that the...
Not a recurring problem.
I'm just saying.
It is, well, I can argue with Blue in the Face.
I don't want to do that.
I understand your arguments, and realize, historically accurate, there weren't a lot of cars there when they built the place. Most people didn't have cars. Most apartments, there weren't apartments above most of them either, I imagine. So therefore, there's, you know, historical context aside, you know, yes, I can see where we say, yes.
And you, and I'm sure you've read, if you read, there's any more pre- negatives to our arguments in support of the, you can't say that, you know, there are things in the code, you can't say that, because theoretically, you can change the law, that, that, that doesn't justify me having a variance. Well, I said at the beginning of this, the only way I can deal with the problem currently is with a variance.
I think we're just asking, if that's what you're seeking here today, I think that that should be the focus of the request. We often get bed and breakfasts, parking, urban chickens kind of things to look at, and we'll put that on our future agenda, but trying to just stay focused to the fact that you're all victims of a natural disaster.
Right.
Some of you mentioned things other than natural happening, you know, at the same time. I mean, all the worlds collided on that early morning fire, and we were just lucky that no lives were lost, so.
Clearly, I think the best thing you can do at the moment is, is to provide support or an indication you support the project as, you know, we've done a lot to try to unify the street, to return it back to its historic look, and, you know, I think it's worthy of being supported. Beyond that, I personally think you need to look at the other issue at some point in time. I don't necessarily think that has to be done today. I would like at least some sort of nod that this is a problem that should be reviewed at some point in time.
But, you know, Gary, I think also, we've been thinking about it, and the downtown has almost completely switched over to being a student-oriented place, and I think that it's more than just parking. I think that it's, you know, what do you go downtown to get anymore if you're an Athenian? There isn't much. And I hate to say it, and everything we've had today, except for Charles Street, is going to exacerbate the problem, and also remote parking. I just think what you should do is tell your renters they can't have cars.
I do. I currently tell them they can't have cars.
And do they obey you? No.
I believe they do. I have no indication that they don't.
Well, I'm glad you believe.
Well, Nancy, I would challenge you to find out if they do, you know.
No, no, I'm just saying that I know that.
We tell them they can't have parking, there's no parking available at the site. And I have no reason to believe that any of them do have parking, that, you know, cars. I think they...
They may be parking in front of Guy's house, but, you know, that's not in front of my house yet, but that's coming.
That's moving every 24 hours.
But the thing is that I'm in favor, and I did talk to members of the zoning board, and I said, you know, you ought to think about this as a public, without really going into curb cuts and all of that. I mean, I'm already on the same page as you are with that. I don't know about, you know, what action we would take. I talked to Guy a couple of weeks ago and told him I thought, you know, the more coordinated it is, the better. So, you know, that's basically what's, but, you know, you're all increasing the density, aren't you? You're adding apartments to make it viable.
To make it viable, it's not viable, it is a flat-out necessity.
No, no, I know.
The Chariarch Trust had no mortgage, had, you know, income that goes 99.9 percent is from those properties to do a charitable purpose. We're looking at a million two to a million three loan on the property. The project's going to be two, 2.1 million dollars.
I said viable, and I meant in a, I didn't mean that in a negative way. I think that you have to decide what you're going to do, but I think that the zoning board is the place where it probably will be decided.
Well, obviously, and we're on the zoning board. But that doesn't mean that my conversations with city officials, doesn't mean that you can express, like the Historical Society did, support for the project. And I do think that is something that you should consider doing, and that's why I'm here asking for it.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter, appreciate it. We have a real, we've gone way over time, but we want to hear from our other...
In the interest of time, Mr. Hunter did very fine.
Okay, terrific. Guy, did you have anything?
Go for it.
I spoke with the mayor earlier, unless there's like something really crucial that you want to bring as far as report-wise, can we...
Is it all up to me?
We'd like to table your end.
Yeah, we'd like to table your end, if that's possible. Okay, great.
Twice as long next time.
Mr. Phillips, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Guy Phillips, and I live at 171 North Congress Street. The buildings that we're talking, that I'm representing is physically this half of this building and this building. These two buildings probably are the only buildings in the uptown area that were not fully developed into residential housings on the second floors. The third floor on the, on the, on this building was actually vacant space. And the building next door on the left, the second floor is kind of vacant until you get back quite a ways, and that's where there's a second, the second floor. I'm struggling to be able to explain the value of the properties. Figure a nice four-bedroom house, close to town, rental-wise, the value of it between $100,000 and $150,000. It's just kind of, I'm just pulling that figure for math purposes, but it's probably a pretty good average amount. If you've got, and the storefront would be worth a little bit less, but you're talking, the value of what my intentions on these two buildings are, would be go with four two-bedroom, or I'm sorry, four four-bedroom apartments and the, and the storefronts. I'm, you just kind of do some math, and you're going to come up with about $800,000 worth of value. If, my figure on this is going to be 1.5 to 1.8 million dollars on the cost of doing it, and I will have a value, I mean, I could turn around and sell it based on the income, based on the value of it, for about $800,000, and we're going to have 1.5, 1.8 in it. We've got all these different things that we're working on with tax abatements or tax, I'm sorry, tax credits from the federal government, low-interest loans, these sorts of things to get it closer. But we are increasing the, the number of bedrooms, and there's just no way that it could be, that we can qualify for a loan without doing that. And I'm really struggling, because you're not allowed to talk about the money. But my choices are, take my insurance proceeds and put it in my back pocket and leave these buildings as vacant spaces. I don't want to do that, but I, the bank wouldn't loan me the money to, to do it if we just had the, what we, you know, the two four-bedroom apartments to support it. It wouldn't support the debt. The savings on renovating it doesn't, the savings from not having the additional apartments there, not building them out, the floors will have to be there, but not building it out would not save enough money to reduce the, the cost of the construction and the support of the debt. We've got other buildings that we can leverage to the bank, but the bank's going to look at the income of that particular building, and they're going to expect a certain, certain amount to go supporting the debt. How would you recommend that I explain that?
I want to know how much you're charging a bed. $600 a month?
I, I, somebody accused me of renting a one-bedroom apartment for, an apart, a bedroom for 870, for $675, and I told them they were crazy. And then I looked into it, and I had, I've got a one-bedroom apartment that looks out over Court and Union that two people share, and it was $675. My guess, I don't, I'm pretty sure it's like $550 per bedroom for a four-bedroom unit. I think that's kind of the...
You're almost getting more into the dollar amounts. I guess I would encourage you as a group to address the fact that, again, you're victims of a natural disaster, and in order to protect in the whole historic preservation component, and if you don't work together and get this done, I don't want a vacant parking lot.
No, it's not a parking lot, because my old spot is 14.
We're asking you to write a letter and say...
Well, I would like to know what the parameters are. I'd like to cut right to the chase.
Yes.
Are you asking for us to say that because you're meeting the historic preservation guidelines of the city of Athens?
Trying to, yes.
Well, I'm, because if you are meeting those, then it's, there's extra cost incurred, therefore, we're suggesting that a zoning, parking variance be...
Nancy, Nancy, that's not my position at all. My position is...
I don't want to break you guys up into fragments.
This sounds pretty good to me, Gary.
Exactly the same as mine. My position is that the proposals that have been put on the table, as my understanding, I know ours is, that it fully meets the code except for parking, which needs variance. Parking is, regardless of all the other that I made, is impossible for these sites, because I gave you the dimensions and so forth of the lot, it is impossible to provide onsite parking. Therefore, I'm asking you to recommend the project to the zoning board, because it is physically impossible to put the parking onsite.
How far are you from the historic preservation?
How far am I?
Guidelines, I mean, that's, you know, I mean, just trying to detect what you're saying about, you meet it in all ways. If you rebuild it this way, you don't need, you can't use and don't need the historic because you're a non-profit.
Let me try to summarize this. I know it's getting late here.
No, 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 but I mean, we have to write the letter.
I know, and there's, first of all, the board's zoning appeal members have contacted me wanting to talk about cost. They're wanting to know why the insurance is not replacing the value of the building. So that being said, I think probably going to have to let them talk about this Tuesday night to some degree, because they're asking the question, at least they have to me privately. The other part is, all three of these gentlemen have different situations at hand, and I talked to Lisa about this, and she didn't want me to put it in writing, but she wants me to kind of initiate the conversation with the members, that when you, if you approve one, you're almost going to have to approve all three of these. There's not a chance or a way that one building can be redone and the other two not be redone in the way it's done, in a timely manner. We have a gentleman looking for historic tax credit, so he's got one avenue of restoration in the way his gets done. Gary's in a situation where he's a non-for-profit, he's not eligible for these tax credits, but he's able to try to do this, which adds cost. And then Scott's building is partially, a good portion of it's got to be tore down to get to the rest of these buildings, to save the facades, to do this preservation. So all three of them are affected in a different way, so their arguments are different, but the end result's going to be the same, where they need the parking variance to have this go forward, and how, how that's done. And I, I think I have to introduce the meeting in that format, and it almost makes it, I'm trying to not sound like I'm one way or the other, but I think that has to be stressed to them, that if Gary's building's approved and the others two are denied, we can't get to Gary's building. If Scott doesn't let his get tore down, and, and we got a building that's actually in dual ownership, but the facade of these two, 114, there's no way to not look at this as a, as a whole, a whole project, so.
You could, I mean, I was trying for a more positive approach.
Yes.
A more end product that we could all be proud of, and, you know, maybe there's some wiggle room here, but I guess I don't, I don't think it's wise to tie all three together. I'm not the zoning inspector, but I don't, I think that they can rise or fall, and they'll be fine. I mean, I don't see a big problem.
I need, I need, I need Gary to be happy. He's my neighbor, he's got, had that building. He's got, had that building. We do have to go together. But anyway, I like what you said about, your words were wonderful.
What, which of those, where does it not meet the guidelines? It does, doesn't it? I mean, is the, are the...
You mean historic preservation?
None of them meet the historic preservation, but two that we're doing. Number one, my building was built in 1940. I don't think that goes in.
You have to contextualize it anyway, doesn't it?
But, but I think what Gary, between what, true, true, I'm saying, we're taking something that looks, that was just average and transforming that part of the block into something that's beautiful. And historically, Gary, Gary's looks very similar to the building that he had. Mine doesn't look at all like it looks, but it's, it's more functional and it ties together with the other buildings. And it's, you're beautifying it, you're upgrading the facade and you go through the process that needs to sit. Parking's impossible. We have this...
Well, I think that's, you know, that was where I was going, but what about the one on this end? That one looks the least, is that?
Gary's guy?
This is that?
That's what I'm getting. This is the one I have and forgetting this. And that, you know, that building was painted, it should probably be...
It's pretty ugly.
Nancy, as far as, my approach to it was to not only maintain the historical appearance and character of the two buildings I own, which is a clean-and-building there and a half-buying in the back, but actually enhance it.
One problem.
I, you know, I instructed John Valter, which, you know, I think the other two are using John Valter's knowledge, he's doing them all. He's doing them all, so we unified on that. The three of us have gotten together to see that this is a unified concept and it's not hodgepodge or concollecting as some downtown Athens are already. We added, I added what I call New Orleans-style ironwork on the windows of 14 and another expense, simply to enhance the look. I made sure all of the ginger bedding on 12 was, you know, was the clean-and-house is still there at another, if that exists. And that's just your front facade. Behind that, it's all concrete. You know, where are you? Does it make any difference?
I, you know, I, again, I don't know how we're going to write this letter.
Well, okay, I, having been on the zoning board appeals, I know, I think you were too at one point.
Yeah, for a decade.
Yeah, for a decade, longer than I have. I always hesitate for other bodies to involve myself in citizen boards as mayor or even as planning commission, whether we're citizen-based or not.
Some are statutory.
Well, yes.
Some are statutory.
Yes.
Different going, though.
Yes, I'm aware of that too. I would actually say if anything we've, I would like to lean towards having this be historically accurate and, and that involves a lack of parking unfortunately. So, but again, the argument is that the capability of building anything with the adequate required parking would be very difficult. To find parking that's anywhere in that area that would work would be very difficult. So I'm not sure what, what we can do in one sense. I could say we endorsed the letter of the Historic Society. We think that's...
It's actually the letter from the Historic Preservation Commission, isn't it?
Yes.
I don't know that you have a letter from the Historical Society.
Mary Ann Reeves.
The one I gave you, it says Athens City Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay.
Yeah, that's Mary Ann Reeves.
Yes.
And again, really, it's, it's encouraging the, the process to go forward rather than addressing whether to give a variance or not. So it's kind of weak in terms of what the gentleman would like to see. At the same time, I, I'm loathe to say, I want to see this crash, crash, literally crash and burn a second time.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I mean, I would support, and, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Just basically stating that we, if everybody's read this in agreement, that we would support this, well, the Athens City Plating Commission supports the Athens City Historic Preservation Commission.
Yes. Is that a motion? Do I hear a motion in a second there?
It doesn't say anything about the variances on the parking and that's what they need to hang the hat on.
It says, it says...
Actually, it does.
It does, right. We'd also encourage the city to consider flexibility or variances with parking requirements and other such zoning issues so that property owners can rebuild, so that we can restore the, this key corridor. We can, sure, let's, what would it, we'll say.
We're a historical group to do good organization. If you could toughen the tone on that, make it so that we recommend that you give them...
You don't recommend anything to council before and they haven't, you know.
I'm trying to get a motion in second and a vote.
No, we're going for the second paragraph on the letter, but if you want to.
No, go ahead. No, I'm not, I'm not, you gals are doing great, continue.
What do we recommend?
I heard a request from Guy and I think I heard some yays in the audience about emphasizing this last sentence, so maybe reiterating.
That under the circumstances, we recommend, if they strongly, strongly recommend, they consider variances.
Give the variances a quarter.
Well, I'd say give the variances, but they might be offended.
You know, that's, you know, you kind of, that's, that's...
Right. What do you want? You want to do it that way? What do you think, Roger?
I agree. Considerations are good.
Give the variances consideration.
We strongly support...
Are you capturing the star so that he can help us in that aspect?
Do you want another sentence about we strongly support?
We're supporting the letter plus we're going to add a paragraph saying we...
Strongly support.
We consider the variance.
We ask the zoning board of appeals to do so.
That would be good for emphasis, yes.
Okay. I don't know that we can apply Christie's name to this because she's not here, so I don't know if that's something, want to reach out and see what she knows.
Okay, but as planning commission, we take a vote on it.
Okay.
It's the planning commission's vote, right?
Okay.
So is all the things we've been putting together, is that a motion?
Yeah, two paragraphs of letters support you.
That's a motion.
She made it, I second it.
There's a second, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous with one.
Maybe you lose my parking ticket, I'm in.
You're asking the wrong person.
All right, we are going to table the reports.
My report's talking about this.
Okay, so.
Next meeting is...
Next meeting is May 21st, 2015, and there's a motion for adjournment in second.
Having considered all our adjustments, we stand to adjourn.
Great, thank you very much.